Five.
Thank you. Um, welcome everyone to the San Mateo Foster City School District. Um, board study session. It is February fifteenth. I'm calling the meeting to order at five thirty-two P M. And we will begin with the flag salute, so please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, from the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under thy invisible liberty and justice. We'll do local, trustee Brooks here. Trustee Kim.
Here.
Trustee Trin here. I am here. Um, trustee Watkins is absent today. And we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
One second. Thank you trustee Trin for the motion and trustee Brooks for a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Was for aye. Um, and we will move on to item five. Uh, public statements related to agenda items. Please limit statements to three items, uh, three minutes. We'll take um, public statements now and then we'll do it again sometime during middle of the um, the study session. So if anybody has any comments now, we can do it. We'll take public comment first from the live audience, then we can go to the Zoom audience. Um, so those of you on Zoom, we can begin to raise your hand on Zoom if anyone has any comments. Here, let me know, raise by a hand, right? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone here. So Joe, can we check with the Zoom audience, please?
Yes, thank you, President Proctor. Uh, good evening. We're calling on speakers for public comment. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. At the moment, there are no raised hands.
Okay, great. We'll check back with everybody. Um, and we will move on to item six A, which is our presentation on math. So I will turn it over.
All right, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kenyatta Cook, Middle School Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And I'm joined tonight to present this board study session on K eight mathematics with my colleagues. Amy Burke, math coordinator, and Pam Bartville, Elementary School Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We are really excited tonight to share with you our progress in transforming teaching and learning in the area of mathematics. Specifically, the work that we've done the last three years. I want to begin by highlighting some specific areas in our district strategic plan where we've made some really wonderful progress, specifically in goal one, our achievement goal. You will hear tonight how we're implementing the instructional coaching model to support, support teaching and learning. We will also share with you under goal one, um, our professional development model. And you will hear how we're using data to inform instruction. In our equity goal, we will also highlight um, how we're increasing access to algebra by the time students leave our um, our grades. In eighth grade, they have access to algebra and we've increased that and you'll have opportunity to see that as well. Before we get into the agenda, let's just take a moment to ground this conversation in our mathematics vision and mission statement. A few years ago, um, committee of math teachers crafted this statement and they align it with the mathematics framework. SMFC students become enthusiastic and proficient learners of mathematics who are able to share their thinking, use multiple representations, and build on the ideas of others. Our SMFC math program aims to increase meaningful mathematical discourse and sense-making to feel fluency, flexibility, and strategic competency in all students. So in tonight's board studies um, session, you'll hear how we're turning this mission and vision into reality. Specifically, how our students are using multiple representations when they're um, explaining their mathematical thinking and how they're engaging in sense-making and academic discourse on a daily basis in the classroom setting. So I'm going to turn it over now to Amy, who will get into our agenda and talk specifically about how we're transforming teaching and learning.
Great, thank you. Um, so we're really excited to be here during this study session with you all to share um, what with the board and our community, um, our hyper-focus on um, not just mathematics or some measurable performance outcomes, but really transforming the teaching and learning experience for our students every day in the classroom. Um, what we'll talk through and share some examples of today are um, students engaging with the standards for mathematical practice. We're going to share some classroom video from a middle school math six classroom at Burrell. We'll take a look at what we see the students doing and what do we know that the teacher is doing to facilitate that um, sense-making for students. And then we'll also dip into um, some classrooms based at Laurel Elementary until fourth and fifth grade classrooms. Um, we're also going to hear from teachers, but what's their experience? Um, as we are, as a system thinking about transforming teaching and learning in our classrooms and supporting students' mathematical um, proficiency and enthusiasm. And we'll talk about our peer teacher instructional coaching um, structure that we have in place to support this real shift in teaching and learning and the other systems of support that we have in place here in San Mateo Foster City to um, allow every student to achieve the mission and vision that we have for them in mathematics. We're going to start with um, division of fractions. This is the middle school math content. And we're actually going to come back to this problem when we visit um, for just a few moments, a slice of a math six classroom. Um, but I wanted to share this expression with, with everyone to help us uh, conjure up our own experience with mathematics, right? Um, some of us are excited right now. Um, some of us want to step out of the room. Um, others might be thinking like, oh, I know what to do. I'm going to flip the, you know, flip the second fraction. I'm going to multiply by the reciprocal and I'm going to get an answer. Um, others might be like, I'm going to wait silently and hear how other people are thinking about it, or maybe I'll pull out my calculator. Um, those are experiences that um, we may at this table have had and um, families in our community at home may have had. Um, but that is not what we're going to see in what we're sharing tonight, and that is not what we're working on in this district. Um, to really deepen the understanding, go after the conceptual understanding um, for for our students for this type of problem. Yeah, I'll stop there. Okay. Um, so what we're really going to um, take a look at first here is what does problem solving look like in our middle school classrooms? And we're going to start in our middle school classrooms during this study session, just the same way that we started with this district-wide work in our district. We actually started this work a few years ago at the middle school level and we built out on teams of teachers to collaborate and uh, we've considered a new curriculum and we um, you know, did a lot of work to think about how do we make more equitable access to higher level math for every student. And then we've sort of done, we call it um, backwards planning in education, right? We start sort of with the end goal and then we went backwards. How do we set up every student in our system up to be successful with problem solving? And problem solving means more than getting an answer, right? Fourteen happens to be the answer to the previous expression if we were looking for what does it equal? But we're looking for more than that in our math classrooms. We're looking for our students to become enthusiastic and proficient learners of mathematics who are able to do maths and we're expanding that definition of what does it mean to do math? And we're not making this up by ourselves. We're leaning into the standards for mathematical practices, which all start with verbs. Students will, math practice one, make sense of problems and persevere in following them. Students in our classrooms will share their thinking. Students will use multiple representations and build on the ideas of others. So um, I, I had the opportunity to um, step into a math six classroom at Burrell Middle School. Um, it was now two weeks ago. And I went in uh, two days in a row. Um, amazing students, amazing um, collaborative team there at Burrell, also connected to the larger district math team. And I wanted to share this clip with you and um, it's a, it's a very short video and you can't really hear the students. It's truly just me on my iPhone taking the videos, so apologies for the quality, but what I want you to um, to look for is, do you see evidence in this clip of students building on other students' thinking? Do you see evidence in this clip of students using diagrams to represent their thinking? Because when our students are using diagrams and multiple representations and able to have a conversation about their thinking, they're deepening their conceptual understanding. So let's take a look at the clip. Okay, again, the quality, you know, is not top-notch here, but um, what you weren't able to quite hear from that was that um, we have a strategic grouping of students here where uh, the students were using their primary language and supporting others at the table with um, a variety of English language proficiency. And um, we also, you know, note students are sitting in groups. They are um, no one in, in this clip is a passive learner. You see lots of action that we can describe. Um, we see um, you know, students like attentively listening, sharing their thinking, and then um, you know, the student in the top left is then taking that information and going back to her own representation on her desk, circling something and, and thinking about what does division actually mean? Um, so as I shared, I got to be in this classroom two days in a row. The first day was, that was a small slice, maybe a fraction of the time that I was in there. Uh, but um, but uh, and, and what they were doing that day was um, sort of building on previous knowledge. The students that day were asked to um, talk about and represent and share their thinking around um, whole number division. And then day two was the introduction to fractional division. And so we have that, um, we call this naked numbers here. That expression on the left um, is actually not how in our math six classrooms across the district, we're not showing students a problem with just a statement like that. We begin instead with what we're about to share, which is context. And as you're sharing it, I'll talk through what this is. I'm going to give more information than what the students got. They literally just got the video. But what it shows is an apple being put into a scale and then some cubes being put into pie. Then get information that the apple weighs five and quarter ounces and the cubes weigh three eighths of an ounce each. So the question that the students then generate, I'm going to tell us here at the table. Um, but the question that they then generate is, how many cubes does it take to equal the weight of the apple? So we um, share it in the context. And the students then need to navigate with their language, with their uh, representations and visuals, and with their collaboration amongst each other. How would we solve this problem? What does this problem even mean? Um, and so these are some photos from this classroom. Um, and I want to point out the one in the middle. Um, I, I made that one the biggest because it shows um, really clearly uh, part of their process. The teacher asked them first to do some work individually. And in the center photo, you'll see there's um, each corner sort of has some student work on it, and they happen to be in different colored pens. That's because each individual student did some um, you know, personal think time and representation for themselves first. And then they started talking and sharing their strategies with one another. From that, they were able to, um, just because I was in the room, I can tell the story about the one in the, in the center. Um, from that, they were able to think about a different representation. Those rectangles in the middle, those are called tape diagrams. It's one way to represent um, number. And they were able to work together to take their initial thinking and to build something new. Um, there's lots of other exciting things that if we were just had, you know, all night to talk, I could point out all the great other ideas that there were in this classroom. But again, the transformation that we're here to highlight and study together is around um, really having the students be the sense makers and the teacher facilitating that rather than the teacher telling the students how to do something. Um, so I asked Ms. O'Bell, the math six teacher, um, about how her goals for the lesson, uh, what were her goals for the lesson in terms of the math practices? And here's her response.
The discovery piece, the asking questions of each other, the sense-making and using other ideas to build on their own, so that when they as math learners, they're starting to get going and they feel stuck and then coming up with ways to get to the next step by using each other. They got to go around to different tables and see those ideas and bring them back and talk about them. So if their whole group got stuck, they had another resource to bring back and be like, okay, what did we see that might help us unstick? Um, so that they work on a little bit of that method, not endurance, what's the word?
Perseverance.
Perseverance. Yeah.
Awesome. So this is again, just a slice of um, a day at Burrell Middle School, but it represents um, what we're really trying to share and show um, rather than me just, you know, reading the mission and vision and talking about our, our plans. Um, so that very week, I got to visit some of Laurel fourth and fifth grade classrooms. And what we're doing in our elementary schools now is again, it's that backwards planning. We're trying to think about what, okay, if we want to see our students um, being active doers of mathematics in our middle school years, what do we need to do in the elementary grades to prepare them for that setting? Um, so this is uh, and we've sort of honed in on a few strategies that we're really trying on in classrooms and encouraging and supporting both teachers and students to engage in daily. So this is an example that I saw that very week um, in an elementary classroom at Laurel. And you'll notice, oh, look, it's division again. Um, and the students were asked, what do you notice? And what do you wonder? And every student in that room had something to contribute. Every student in the room had the expectation that they would share something mathematical that they recognized here. This is um, also going after another math practice that is looking for and making sense of patterns and um, and sharing their reasoning. So you can see at the very bottom, um, I just thought it was cool that it connected to what we had seen in the math six classroom. You'll see at the bottom, this is when we're stepping into a whole number divided by a fraction.
One of the things that I think is really critical when we're thinking about mathematics is, and we're talking about transforming learning, we have amazing teachers in our district. And I know sometimes, you know, having been a teacher here myself, when you think about mathematics, it's, sometimes it's the content area that people don't necessarily step up or feel more comfortable in. And one of the uh, amazing strategies that our math team is engaged in in elementary this year is the math mindset routines. And so when we think about the middle school, we think about the depth of the math and the complexity of the math and even getting students of different proficiency levels, whether it's a language proficiency or math proficiency to be able to talk. We have to set that up. That doesn't come easily to everybody. And so the math mindset routines, which is a fraction or a portion or slice, um, a piece of slice, um, of our math uh, program in elementary sets this up. And this is something that when I think about transforming teaching and learning in elementary, we really wanted to talk about because it's something that our math teachers are doing every single day. And what math mindset routines, it sort of sets up the math lesson. Sometimes it's directly related to what they're teaching that day. Sometimes it might be something that um, students need to work on, that maybe the teacher is recognizing that there's not a lot of fluency around. When we think about math fluency, that students are comfortable talking about, or it could be something that the teacher knows is coming up in mathematics that they want to get their minds working around it. And so in a math mindset routine, and I know you guys have been in, in our classrooms, but for our community as well, um, in a math mindset routine, it looks a little bit different than what we initially think about math teaching and learning, where the teacher is the holder of the information. In a math mindset routine, the teacher actually sets it up similar to what you said in middle and steps back. And in this video, we just had it on the background, but you see the teacher doing things like, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not going to tell you the answer because a lot of times the math students in elementary want to have the right answer, um, which is great, but we want to get them to talk about their math thinking. We want our students to have agency. We want our students to have ownership of the way they're thinking, whether in that moment it's right or wrong. Um, because that's going to help them be flexible math thinkers and a mathematic, that's what we're aiming for. So um, in this math mindset routine, um, we have here to hear from a couple of our, our wonderful teachers from Laurel. Um, Amy met with them and asked them to talk a little bit about how that works at their school, starting here.
I was hesitant at the start of the year to introduce them only because it's not something I was familiar with. Um, but once we got the routine down, I think it's been really eye-opening to students that it's not the answer, it's the path that you get there. So it really gives access to all students to be able to participate in math. Um, because they can observe anything and it's no right or wrong answer.
Yeah, that's kind of similar to what we're doing in my class because at first I have a lot, I had a lot of students who were very hesitant to share what they noticed and wondered because they were really scared about getting the right or wrong answer. But we've had a couple of my math mindset routines where I've asked students to like prove their answer and they've confidently proved it. And then when we kind of looked at the actual answer, we realized it wasn't the right answer, but it was more about the process. Um, so really focusing and spending that time on getting the students ready for math, kind of warming up and just getting them talking about what they're thinking, how they view math and so on.
A lot of times in elementary math and, and mathematics in general in our schools, one of the things that we're working to shift is the students saying something like, either, I don't know, that's too hard, I don't know it, or I got the right answer, but I don't know why, I just know it. And right? And so we know as mathematics gets more complex and we're preparing our students for high school and beyond, that giving them this ten, sometimes ten minute, could be a little bit longer, short few minutes, depending on the lesson, to just have a safe space to think about mathematics in a classroom where they feel comfortable, has been a huge transformation for, for us. And I think, you know, we use the term low floor, high ceiling. The teach, uh, one of the teachers sort of said that in a different way where everyone has an entry point. So when you open up mathematics and you have like the, that, you know, what do you notice, what do you wonder? That's a low floor, high ceiling where anybody can answer and then students are building up their ideas. Hmm, we also wanted to hear from what some of our students say about math mind. Just be prepared, this is very cute. So these are students from Baywood, our um, awesome math uh, Tosa, who works there, uh, videoed a couple of students. And what's, what's really cool is you'll see the first few videos are of younger students, and then you hear how the students, as they get older, explain um, the math mindset routines. But they said, be prepared, super cute.
Because you because I made it on something new too.
That's exactly right, Will. Why do you like to hear other students' math ideas?
Because they're not all different. They're not all the same.
Why do you think it's important to hear different ideas?
So you might know a different answer next time if you see it again.
It's because everybody has different opinions.
Yeah, and how do those opinions help you as a learner?
They can, you can, they make you think like, oh, I never thought about that. And you can use those things to help yourself and ask questions.
I've noticed that uh, a couple of students have been always raising their hands during number talks. But now I've noticed that more people have been raising their hands. And I think the reason uh, of that is because kids are getting more comfortable with um, number talks and they seem like they're in a, in a place like, like some kids think new things are like scared, scary and so they get nervous and stuff. But since like, it's getting like every, like everyday routine, they're getting comfortable, comfortable with it.
I like the math mindset number talks because uh, you could see other people's strategies. And if you fail one strategy, you could try a different strategy and you might get it correct. So there's what, so many different ways you could get the answer. And it's really, it really grows your brain well.
We know that from a young age, sometimes students are either thinking themselves as a math person or not a math person. And um, in elementary, these math mindset routines really support kind of math status where um, there's not, oh, there's the math student, or you're the math student, or I'm the math student. Oh, but you're not. It gives everyone the opportunity to have the same status around mathematics and give students the confidence um, in their learning um, through instruction. And um, we've just seen really great things with it. Um, we also have some data here. We've asked students um, in the fall, um, how confident they feel as a math learner. We did a little survey with students. So you can see the students that agree and strongly agree. Um, and with this thing that we want to keep doing um, in our schools with the targeted grade levels that we're focusing on, so we can see, is that growing? Um, because we know this, this work takes multiple years. Um, and so, so, so that was the slice of elementary. One of the other um, systems that we have in place, um, which has been really pivotal to this work is our peer coaching model. And both um, Kenyatta and um, Amy shared earlier that we did start this work in middle school and the middle school work really helped us think about what do we want this to look like? But I'll have Kenyatta talk about that in just a second. But in elementary, what we've been able to do this year, thanks to our strategic plan, thanks to all of you, is um, ensure that we have um, teachers on special assignment really focused on mathematics to support this transformation in the classroom. And so this year, we have eleven math toses in elementary. Um, our focus is in fourth and fifth grade. It really gets us to um, dig in. We all support all the grade levels, but they have a deep focus there. Our Title One schools plus B-side have a full-time math Tosa. And then the um, rest of the Toses have only no more than two schools each that they're supporting.
And then you want to talk a little bit about middle? Sure. So um, the model in middle school looks a little different. So we have one district math Tosa. And the number fifteen represents our coaching um, release period. So at the middle school, we have coaching um, release periods for teachers, which means that they teach and they coach. So in both sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we have coaches that have a line where they provide coaching support that looks like pushing into a classroom to co-teach, pushing in to support small group instruction, um, or pushing in to model a lesson. Um, our focus for middle school is seventh and eighth grade and putting more coaching support there this year. When we went to a heterogeneous math six environment, um, when we first started this three years ago, we had all of our coaching support at the sixth grade level. So our strategy is to move the support where it's needed. And you all um, have heard about our math pathways during our middle school board study session. You know that new for us this year is the double math block. So we have more coaching support in the upper grades to support. Um, so this is just a deeper look into the peer coaching model at middle school. At the middle school on the um, daily basis, we are really focused on At the middle school on the um, daily basis, we are really focused on um, coaches supporting student agency and identity in the classroom and ensuring that mathematical discourse is happening. Um, I mentioned the system of support. What's different in middle is that you have your sixth, seventh and eighth grade coaches. And then they have weekly meetings where they come together across our four middle schools, about H-Face Side, Burrell and Abbott, and they engage in conversation. But then they take that information back to their weekly meetings through sixth, seventh and eighth grade team. Um, some of the things they focus on is co-creating units, lessons, talking about instructional practices, like what's working, what's not working. Let's put our brains together and think about a different move that we might want to implement the next time we teach this lesson. Or we feel like there's some reteaching that needs to happen. How are we going to engage our students with some reteaching? So middle school's a little bit different in that you have your math coaches and then they come together across the schools to meet and collaborate and talk about best practices. So now we're going to turn back to um, the sixth grade math classroom and hear from one of our math um, teachers who's also a coach and her perspective around being the coach.
So we have a lead who kind of takes all of our ideas and puts them in to lesson plans that are shared with us and really quite amazing um, PowerPoint, you know, slideshows. Um, but there's a lot of like, okay, what do you mean by this? What's your thinking here? What, just like you asked me, what are we asking of these kids and what are our goals? We have a lot of conversation about like, what do we want to see kids doing versus just the right answer? We are lucky enough to be next door to each other. So we do a lot of like, okay, my kids aren't drawing the picture yet. Like what ideas have you done? Um, I love in the last couple of years, the cross district communication. And then, as you know, I've been in the district a long time and we've talked among the schools. But this is the first time in my years where it's like regularly and in the moment. So we heard another teacher was like giving nudges about the drawing pictures. And so we're like, how did you ask that question to get them to start drawing when I'm feeling stuck? So we do a lot of like, what worked for you? What was hard? What did you do to unstick them? And even if it happens after the lesson, it's really good resources for like the next lesson. Like, okay, I'm going to try to ask that question when I can't get the visual out. Um, especially in this unit, because drawing fractions is challenging and drawing fractions of fractions is challenging. But um, as we pull the calculators away for this unit, I try to explain to them that their pictures are going to make them know their answers right. That's going to be their checking their numbers and they're going to feel so confident because the picture is going to prove to them that that has to be the solution. Um, so we talk a lot about like, what did you say to get your kid to do it? Or the other piece, the reflective piece, our, our team across all the schools does is when do we need to revisit? Like, how should we reengage this? Should we let this go? Or should we show it to them again in a different way? Um, so that they get to revisit, um, especially if it was a lesson they got kind of stuck on. Like, what's the re-engagement around that so that they can leave feeling like, oh, I mastered it or I, we got it this time? Um, and they get to have that like proud moment.
Awesome. So awesome. Um, in elementary, um, as we mentioned, last year we had a very small math Tosa team. So this year, um, we were able to really lean into the coaching and support work. And Laurel is uh, one of our title one schools where we have a full-time math Tosa. Um, so we want to, we want to share with you what our upper elementary teachers are saying about this work. Because we all know when you work in isolation is never as good as when you work in collaboration. Uh, so they have some great things to share as well.
The collaboration between teacher and Toses has been really great, a lot of support and resources, planning time. And so Julie's just been wonderful of always offering, well, how can I help? What do you need? Um, so I definitely feel supported by our Tosa team getting us to the, where we want to be as an angle.
Julie has been very present in our classes and at our um, staff meetings and grade level meetings. And she's been very helpful when I ask for either games or even some activities to do as a class to help promote conversation. Because that was what my class was struggling with at the beginning was I couldn't get them to talk. So she provided me with a lot of really good resources and that's kind of been one of the biggest things to help my students start engaging in the academic conversation that you saw.
This is, um, you know, I think we, we don't, we all, we all have it. But um, one of the things that I think is really critical about this work is in the moment support. Um, I think both the middle school teacher, Mr. Bell, and the elementary teacher said, we're not necessarily coming in. Yes, we're coming in. We want student achievement. We want mindset routines. We want to see multiple representation. But every teacher's on a different path and in a different starting place. Um, some have been teaching a long time, some are new. And so it's always going to be about where do we meet our teachers, where they are. And sometimes it's just a quick conversation that you have in the hallway. Sometimes it's uh, let's set up a meeting and talk deeper. Sometimes it's, let me come in and see how that's going, or I'm happy to, you know, try the lesson out for you. You watch me. So it's so many um, different things. But this happens to be a teacher that's been in our district a very long time. I think probably longer than me. Um, and um, it just, I don't know, it's just, we just want to share this because sometimes we think teachers that have been here a long time feel, are like, oh, I got it. I know how to do it. But we, we're seeing with having um, partners in our Toses that all of our teachers are kind of getting reinvigorated and um, want to keep learning and learning new things. So here's um, Mark White, an amazing teacher who's been, uh, who's at B-side formerly Sunny Bray, been in our district a long time, talking of uh, writing a little letter to his math Tosa, um, talking about feeling so supported, getting the help and guides, enjoying it again, learning something new, feeling inspired, um, and really thinking about how to support students. So um, just wanted to throw that in because we thought that was good. Um, one other system of support that we have is our professional learning. Um, our, our work um, around mathematics is really to align um, not just the professional learning that happened on our district PD days, but also uh, professional development that happens at staff meetings or even in conversations and grade level meetings. Uh, we also want to do uh, do some alignment in our elementary to middle. So our professional development is really focused on specific content. So that teachers are um, teaching in the moment. It's hard to say like, let's plan this math unit that you're doing, you know, at the end of the year. It's plenty upcoming math units and our teachers have been really appreciative of that. We um, as, as the middle, middle school shared and in elementary as well. How do we also open up cross-district collaboration? Um, and then how do we continue the work at the school site? Um, and here's some uh, data from our per, most recent professional development session. This is specifically looking at fourth and fifth grade who engaged in the math professional development um, this year. And so we asked them questions like, did this professional development um, use your prior knowledge? Um, were you able to model or practice content? We don't want to just be a stage on the stage, just like we want our teachers to model with students. So did it do that? And this is um, a teacher that um, agreed or strongly agreed. Uh, were you able to interact with colleagues? Um, did we give you ideas to support your students and families? And is the work we're doing here aligned with what we're trying to do as a school district? So you can see the data for our elementary and then um, middle school.
Well, you pretty much um, shared what the indicators are. And you can see here in middle school, this is specifically just our middle school math teachers. But what's slightly different is that we have a lot of our math coaches leading the PD. And so um, anytime you have someone who knows your students, who is in the work with you and they are a strong leader and they're leading the professional development and professional learning, you often see a high um, correlation between how it's landing and how impactful it is for teachers. So we haven't seen these numbers in our district. You know, I've been in this district 18 years. Pam's been in this district a little bit longer than me. And um, we know that often there's a struggle to have PD that um, benefits all teachers. Because like you mentioned before, they're in different places. We have new teachers, veteran teachers. But when you have multiple opportunities, this is not a one size fit all. Middle school, they have a menu of options to select from and then they engage in their own choice. And this is, this is the data. So it's really great to see that resonating with our, our teachers.
Can't get better than a hundred percent. Right? Yeah. Oh, you guys.
So I'm going to sort of close this out, um, you know, with this final section that comes down to some of the district-wide systems of support that we have in place. To be able to go to the depth of collaboration that we're able to, certain things have to already be in place and aligned. And it's not a small task actually to get um, a district-wide um, you know, adopted textbook to actually be put in play in classrooms across the district. So of course in middle grades, we use Desmos, which is um, a wraparound on illustrative mathematics. And in elementary, we use CERN, which is a wraparound on um, Engage New York. Both very highly rated, um, you know, common core aligned textbooks. Um, and then the next level down is what we on our teams, these peer coaches and Toses that who we've been talking about, they do more than just the in-the-moment coaching. They do more than um, you know, the, the daily support. They also really work on curricular guidance that takes the textbooks, thinks about the classrooms that we're serving and makes adjustments and curates tasks that are going to bring out the math practices that we want to see our students engaging in, in those classes. So um, you know, in both of those, you're going to, you're going to see um, teachers from across the district accessing those and utilizing those. Um, and then we already know this, but this is a big system that we changed in this district. We changed our middle school math pathways in order to have equitable access to robust math learning. And there was a, you know, policy decision and a whole bunch of work that we've done around making sure that the experiences in the classroom support every student to have the choice to go into the double period math. And when they make that choice to get in there and be successful. And we'll know that that decision, it was um, completely successful when this slide um, more, even more accurately represents the demographic um, representation of our whole district. But you can see on the left in the chart, um, in the last three years, we have been steadily increasing the students who are accessing an algebraic curriculum. You will see on the right, um, a graph that shows over the last three years, um, what percentage of students sitting in that room fall into each of these uh, demographics. So I just, I want to take a little care on this one just because I want to make sure um, that we understand when we're looking at this first um, set of three bars, the Asian students, that the height of them is showing a percentage in the classroom. And the numbers at the bottom are actually showing the number of students sitting in the classroom. So even though we see what visually is looking like, oh, there's a dip from 65% down to 57%, that is not showing a dip in students who are um, um, you know, saying that they're aging, that are in that classroom. There's actually an increase in the number, but the spread over a larger number who are accessing it um, gives a smaller percentage. Um, we also, you know, are, are working um, on this system to um, connect more with our families. It's not just our classroom features and our students who were engaging in this work. It's also our community. And so um, our team of math Toses in connection with our site leaders and district site staff is really um, putting resource, time and energy into um, parent math nights. I was recently at one at Sunny Bray that was just focused on first grade um, classrooms. And I have to look for my number. It was almost half of the families who were invited were able to attend. And the families were um, presented with um, math games to play at home. The, the questions that they might ask their young learners to help the student really do that sense-making. Um, they were sent home with baggies of manipulatives. And we're, we're trying on different ways of engaging with families across our district. Um, I also brought these adorable little um, rag tags. We do use ST Math um, as um, and it's um, a homeschool connection. It's a, an online um, program that really goes after um, the conceptual understanding with visual models of mathematics. And um, students, as they progress through their grade level journey, they can earn different rag tags that they, um, that we're distributing to them. If you got 20% through, you get a little star, 40% through and they go up to only a hundred percent. It's at the very end. And then um, some of you may have seen our amazing middle school math Tosa, Gary Lowe. We're sending home communications to families to um, around our middle school math pathways. Because it is a change in pathway and there aren't other districts around who are doing it this way. And there's a lot of learning and communication that we're um, really working on to make sure that everyone is empowered to make the decision that is best for their student or family.
And Gigi. Can't say who he is.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, at this time, why don't we open up for before um, questions and comments? And then we'll go to public comment. Don't go back. It's been a while. I'll just open up and whoever wants to jump in.
Love jumping. Thank you for the presentation. Um, very informative. I love what I see. It's amazing. Um, I have a question regarding the parent involvement and communication. What strategies do we have in place besides offering um, in-person school um, or math nights that engages with the parents? Are there other strategies that we have in place? Whether it's digital or I guess, you know, something that is more extreme to be able to provide parents access as well?
Um, one thing that I can share that um, we're doing right now at the elementary level is um, for each unit that the students in grades K through five are coming up on, um, our team is developing um, uh, sort of a one-pager that is can be sent home to families. If you're a third grade teacher, you can send this one page at home to all of your families. And it talks about the mathematics that's coming up for the next month or so. It offers um, a read aloud uh, book that will connect to the content. Um, it's in both English and Spanish and um, and some game, again, games. Play, uh, students learn through play. And so that's one offering that we have at our elementary school.
Which related to the coaching. Regarding the Toses who are in the coaching and teaching capacities, um, and their collaborations, um, I guess across the district, um, how often are they conducting these collaborations that are happening across the district? And if they feel the need to um, have some discussion before uh, these scheduled uh, collaborations occur and it's something that needs to be distributed, you know, you know, as a priority? Are there other opportunities to create time to have these discussions in?
I, you can start in that one. Yeah. Sounds great. Okay. Um, so I think we're talking right now about our middle school team who um, again, we're three years into building this collaboration. Um, they are almost constantly in touch. There may not be that Google Meet setup, but they are constantly on emails. but they are constantly on emails. Hey, would you hop onto a Google Meet with me for twenty minutes? Um, you know, there is a photo in here. There's many who share a wall and even in-between classes are, are sharing ideas. Um, also through the curricular guidance that um, that team develops, there are resources put in that. And since it's a, a Google document, it's updated daily. You know, and so that's actually sort of a, a landing page for our middle school team to go to and to take a look at. You know, what happened today and what can I do to, to move my students forward? And then I'll also give you another example. So when we went to heterogeneous math six classrooms, um, and you can add in on this as well, um, we had our coaches who were meeting across the district once a week for the most part, because that was weird. And they felt that it was really important. So the model at that time for sixth grade, the coaches felt it was really important to be a week ahead of the other sixth-grade teachers so that they can share with them, okay, you wanna tweak that than the last year, Miss Dobell share? Like how she goes next door, something's not working and talk about, okay, what kind of prompt did you use? What's, what nudge did you use? So, they were more strategic in their coaching when it was brand-new content in terms of, um, not only what was happening in the classroom, but having heterogeneous classroom. So they stayed a week ahead. And then they shared, they went back to their sites and shared the lesson design with their sixth-grade team. We've moved away from it being so tight like that to it being more like the example that Amy gave, which is, it's a little bit more free-flowing now, but they also have digital ways to post and discuss and share when they need to connect with people.
I have a question about um, how we support multilingual learners. Um, I, you know, I know that part of the strategy is like having students um, discuss in their home languages. But, you know, we've moved, um, just generally, you know, we, we've moved, we're moving away from like just the answer to like, how do we communicate how we arrived at the answer or what is our thinking around the answer? And so, I'm wondering, especially in these heterogeneous classes where, you know, you, you're also going to have like kids at, with very different levels of like, like grasp of language or grasp of communication in, in English, right? So, I'm wondering, like, is there, are there any strategies that we're applying specifically for multilingual learners to get them to translate? Like if they, they can communicate in their home language, but like translate it into English?
Yeah. Um, we have a, a few signature strategies that we're sort of leading out with around that, with that in mind in particular. Um, one of them actually is the math mindset routine that, that you saw. So students, um, you know, part of how we learn is through talking and listening. You know, but they're not just listening just to a teacher. They have that um, opportunity to share their own idea, to hear maybe a similar idea echoed multiple times from other students in the room. Um, and so, that's, that's one strategy that we're employing. We also have another strategy. I don't wanna get too much in the weeds, but we, it's called the three reads protocol. And, and part of it is um, asking students to um, engage in reading a problem three times, but with three different purposes as you go through. And again, the repetition with language, the opportunity for students to make sense as the language is presented is there. Um, our math TOSA team in conjunction with our amazing teachers are really interested also in students using different representations. And actually, that manipulative use and um, visual representations, those things help us talk, actually. Being able to point to something and even um, you know, have someone else maybe offer the word. If I don't know a specific, you know, if I fumbled on the reciprocal like I did earlier, um, with all of us looking at the right thing, I can get that language from other colleagues.
Yeah, I wanna add this. Yeah, um, you know, the multilingual team and I, we're collaborating a lot around the literacy work, which we know. But we've been in lots of conversations, especially as we've launched um, some of the strategies in K three around language function, while collaborative conversations, cognitive content dictionary. What can that look like across the content area? And so, we are working with um, the teams to think about, what does that look like in mathematics? Like we said, we do have some signature strategies, but how do we amplify those for multilingual learners in upper grade as well? But in our lower grades, our teachers are starting to do that because they're learning those strategies.
Uh, just to be follow-up, so actually, the, the question trustee Brooks, trustee Trent asked, following up on that. In terms of the slip pathway, I know that was a few years back that we rolled out that process. All the information that was communicated to parents was made available in Spanish as well to kind of inform them about the policy change and how that path was gonna work out. I was hoping to actually jump back to the math pathways, uh, previous access to algebra slide. I just had a few quick questions on that. And then while we pull that, I was gonna ask, for students to fall behind on this kind of process, what process of intervention do we have in place? Or, you know, let's say, how many students are involved and who are falling behind? What is our kind of step-by-step for addressing that as you kind of go module to module in this process? It might be a long, we'll be prepared high level.
Yeah, um, I feel like there are, you know, multiple ways that we're trying to, to, to address students who aren't yet understanding, right? The first thing is that we, um, our teachers believe that are, and you can see with the examples that I shared today, that math is actually, it's continually coming back and building upon itself. So, um, one way, this isn't all the ways, but one way is that, um, in the, you know, the day-one lesson that I shared from the Burrell Math Classroom, we started with content that students already know. But it's never true that every single person knows to the depth that we want them to before we go on to the next. But we have an opportunity to connect to previous knowledge, to go deeper before going to the, let's now divide a fraction by a fraction. So really, um, our teams are thinking about what is on the curricular side um, and the instructional side that will help our students learn from one another in a space that um, allows for that, right? Rather than saying, I'm gonna give this quiz, you know, this portion of my students I gotta do X, Y, Z with. And these students I are gonna get the grade-level content. We're really thinking about curriculum and instruction that's gonna serve all the students at once. Now, with that said, there are still maybe two students who aren't yet there. And part of what we have in place now with our um, peer coaches and TOSAs is that opportunity for some individual check-ins. I wanna be careful to say it's not a pull-out, but, but often our students, um, they just need a nudge, you know what I mean? Or maybe even some encouragement. We, Pam shared that the research has shown us that it's not just this list of skills. It's also a student's belief in their own agency that's gonna help propel students forward. So our program, from the humans that we have in these positions are also going after that piece. And they're able to, because we have this amazing resource right now in, in our district to have extra humans who are math enthusiasts themselves to check in with the kids. Um, we also have, ST Math is uh, one program that we can also assign like previous lessons in to help build up and bolster a student's foundational understanding. But they do that, you know, it might get assigned by a teacher for your at-home component. And then those students are, are working where they might need to, to then come back into the classroom and engage with the dividing fractions.
Yeah. I think it's also important to call out what we're not doing. Um, if you visit district websites throughout the, the Bay Area, you'll find strategies being used that are often euphemisms for separate, isolate, remove, and pushback. So, you might find school districts that offer a class called Foundational Math Six or Support Math Six. And what will happen in a place like that is they'll give a pre-assessment to students and they'll draw a line somewhere. And the students that are below the line, kind of like what Amy described a little bit in terms of the quiz, but at a much bigger level. Because the kids never even make it into Math Six. They start in Foundation Six or Support Six or so, you know, they, they're just always euphemisms to what it's called. Um, and that has a very harmful, long-term impact on children. And they also create honors Math Six. So then they take a different group of kids and they put them in a class separate from, so there's this real sorting and categorization that happens in a lot of school districts. And we don't do that. The other thing we don't do is we don't um, fixate on a student's struggle with one component of the curriculum and say like, okay, this month we're teaching this skill and we tested everybody and David didn't score well enough on that quiz. So for the next three weeks, I'm gonna pull him aside to tutor him on that skill, but he's gonna lose twenty-five minutes a day of the next skill. And there are districts that will actually pull David from class and take him into what they call pull-out. Um, and again, they have lots of euphemisms for that. The learning center, the support center, the transition zone, and they come up with different. But really what it amounts to is a belief that if you separate, then you can give like high dosage support for a short amount of time. And then you put the student back into the class. And, um, and we see over and over statistically that has a very poor impact on student learning. And it also does, it also impacts the area that Amy mentioned of like the psyche of the student and the belief of the student and feeling I'm in the pull-out. And I'm not gonna use the words teenagers use, but they're really ugly sad words that they use to describe themselves in some cases, or their, their classmates when they say, you're in that program. Um, and, and we don't see that. I think it's probably true that it's very integrated, that we try to, you know, give teacher support so that they feel that, that confidence and sign that time in their classroom to be able to um, revisit content with kids and, and give more, basically give more opportunities for the child to, to show, you know?
I'm gonna share, um, a strategy that a teacher shared, um, in a math deficiency, as you mentioned. Um, you wanted to know whether or not, um, or, or what the teacher does if a child is falling behind. One of the strategies a teacher shared that they have implemented is um, collaborating with the other teachers to see if there are any other lower-performing students. And then they would take the class time uh, with those lower-performing students and group them together. And although they're in the different classes, they would group them into a class to um, help enhance their math skills. And I thought that was a pretty creative way of not separating them, but keeping them in a group where they can then learn at their pace to get to grade level.
Kind of physical work, as you thought about earlier, putting language rules. And I think I very much understand that not wanting to do pull-outs or tracking piece. Um, but I think earlier this week, we had a literacy summit. We talked a little bit, we're reading perspective about how these interventions similarly are not designed to kind of adopt those old-school philosophies that have proven not to be effective, but really provide the right support while keeping things moving. And I do like that kind of circular analogy, like just our own experience in math. If not even this, then you learn that. Everything constantly reinforces. And so, now the repetitions is definitely helpful. Sorry, not this slide, but the slide afterwards with the, uh, the bar. Just, just wanna clarify. So see if the raw enrollment number is going up year over year. Those are the enrollment number of folks who've either gone into eighth-grade algebra through either either any of the pathways.
Double math or they're sitting in the eighth grade.
Got it. And then the percentages are relative to the entire class enrolled that year.
That's right.
So we don't necessarily have a percentage of, I guess, each class, like the raws. For example, if the total enrollment of the district had gone up year after year, we don't have that percentage reflected anywhere.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
I need to ask, I think, I think what you're asking about is like the demographics for the, for the class, for the enrollment, so that
Or the eighth graders.
What percentage of our, um, eighth graders are Asian? What percentage are Filipino? Is, is that part of what you're asking about?
Uh, partly, but also, for example, like the one-seventy-two number. I'd be curious in what percentage of eighth graders was that, that year? And then what percentage to twenty-four? Just to get a little bit better context, like raw number, clearly it's progress. Um, it hasn't jumped by leaps and bounds in enrollment, but it's just kind of helpful to know that mark as well. And similarly, I think demographic data is very helpful to see how much we're falling short of what we could be.
I just would add that, um, we, we should have represented that in there. And just to say, in those three years, eighth-grade enrollment has declined slightly each year.
Right, okay.
Uh, and it's over around a thousand. So you can see that, you know, we're about thirty percent of our eighth graders are now enrolled in algebra.
That's great to know.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, I, oh, I guess one really similar to, I think, what we've been talking about. But, um, looking at the slide that talks about, I'm a confident, or I feel confident, maybe my box is on the card. So I can read it. I feel confident of the math learner. So when I look at this one, I think about the eighth graders. And I see that, you know, they're like about a little more than fifty percent confident. And so, they've already gone through this like revamp of the math program since sixth grade, when we like really made the shift. And so I think about the fact that they're not so confident. Um, and I'm wondering, with having gone through this major shift in math, what are the, like, what are the strategies that we're putting in place? And so I think about, now, we have, the two of us have kids that go to the same high school. And I think, okay, what do they do for, for students that we do differently in middle school? And one of the things that I think is very interesting is they use um, their advisory period as like a tutorial period. And so, teachers have time to actually tutor the students and they, they get to choose, students get to choose which class they go to during that period. And so I can think that a student who's struggling in math, who's struggling in science, or struggling in whatever, could go, they could use that day. And it's once a week that they get to use this one-hour period or whatever. But they could say, hey, I really wanna go to my math teacher today and I wanna like really dive deep into this topic or whatever it is that I'm really struggling in. And the teacher can use that period to, you know, help their students. And so, I know that we don't have a lot of extra time where teachers have office hours. And I know high school and college, they have office hours where students can go. High school and college students can drive and they have good time. But I was just thinking, if there's things that we can do within the day where we give students some time and flexibility, and teachers some time and flexibility to give that extra um, time. I would love to see that. And I know that that takes time to implement and it takes money and it takes resources. But, um, you know, that's something where it doesn't require buses to stay later or parents to drive zero period. But it's something that maybe down the road, it could be a strategy that um, gets kids to um, feel more confident and feel like they have the support and it doesn't require them to stay, to go log on to their computer at home and do more math. You know, but um, they have their teacher that they already feel comfortable with. And, um, you know, I don't know, also maybe like high schoolers might wanna come and tutor. I don't know, just like more resources that we could provide for kids to feel confident. And I know middle school is clearly where kids are feeling less competent as math learners. And high school is um, where math gets even more challenging. And so I just would love to make them feel going into high school that they're ready and prepared and Yes. Feeling good. So, that's uh, just what I'm thinking. Um, and as, we have a different perspective, just because we have now freshmen that are in a different school district. I, I keep learning things about high school and saying, oh, that would be interesting to, to start that even earlier. So, that's what I've noticed. I, that wasn't a question. Great idea. Sorry. Why don't we, um, see what, if there's any public comment in the audience here? Anybody? Okay, um, so can we check if there's anybody on Zoom? If you have any quick, um, public comment, raise your hand on Zoom, but Joe, can we check?
Yes. Uh, thank you, President Proctor. There are two raised hands. Uh, I'll call on the first speaker, uh, as soon as I get my timer ready. Okay, thank you. Um, when- Okay, thank you. Um, Wendy Hill. Please go ahead.
Hi, um, thank you all for your time and for all of your efforts. Um, it's really amazing what you've accomplished. Um, and I wanted to um, to provide a voice from a parent with students at one of the middle schools that is not unfortunately offering the same math pathways program. I have um, elementary age kids at North Shoreview Montessori. And we um, we were hopeful that a month ago, when the parents met with the principal, that we were going to have somebody from the district there to talk to us more about what the options are for uh, Parkside and North Shoreview Middle School students who are not going to be offered the same opportunities as students at other middle schools. I understand that our option is to um, transfer to a neighborhood middle school, but um, as you can imagine, uh, you know, we have a our, our, our children have formed bonds at their existing school. And I know that the school board uh, values social and emotional well-being too. So I'm left in at a point where I don't really feel like I have a choice. And I feel as if our Parkside and North Shoreview Montessori schools, uh, the middle schools are being kind of left out of a discussion. Um, I took notes tonight and I heard every student having opportunities, equity, every student should have the opportunity to achieve a mission and a vision in mathematics. But I have um, as of yet, and I, I did attend the math pathways program. Um, and I also uh, attended one with our principal. I've, I've, as I've yet heard, um, have yet to hear what kind of resources students are going to have to uh, go into eighth grade algebra and to follow a similar pathway at our other two Montessori middle schools. Thank you. That's, so my question is basically, or my, my request is that uh, the district takes seriously the request to extend math resources, the same math resources to the Montessori middle schools. And um, if it's necessary to figure out logistics on how to do that. I mean, I understand that maybe we don't have the same teacher resources, but I, I think that um, it should be looked at seriously by the district, how we can, how we can accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is um, uh, Ayolanda Matinos. Please go ahead.
Great. Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, thank you. Um, my name is Ayolanda Matinos and thank you for your time and congratulations on a lot of the successes you've shared. Um, I just want to focus on a specific item where I don't think the message that's being shared is actually matching what's happening on the ground. The uh, middle school math pathways. Um, there were obviously many parents unhappy when the accelerated math was eliminated because they knew that their kids were ready for it and, and so did their teachers for what it's worth. And they knew that their kids would perform better when they're challenged. But I'm not really, I'm not here to relitigate that decision. That's, that's, that is what, what it is. My concern is that the pathways options that are available are not great. And I'm finding, especially this week, that school administrators are actively working to dissuade kids from pursuing them. In grade six, the message was that the kids really should not skip grade seven math. Fine, I accepted it. Many parents accepted it. Now, just this week in seventh grade, when electives are being, are being talked about, my daughter comes home saying that school administrators and counselors who went into different math classes were encouraging them not to take double math in eighth grade, and I quote, even if your parents want you to. This was not an isolated incident in one classroom. I heard similar messages in, from other classrooms. The school district already did a disservice to some of, to some of these students and families by eliminating the accelerated math and left them, and left us with really not great options, to be honest with you. No kid absolutely loves the idea of double math. But it is completely unacceptable to now put families in a position where we're having to relitigate these conversations and these decisions with our children, when we know where we have their best interest in mind. The counseling line and that, that dotted line that shows up on the slide that you showed should not mean that you're just ac- actively pushing kids and counseling kids to not um, pursue the double math option, even if they're ready, just because they don't love the idea of losing another elective to take double math. Because it is the school district that put them in that position. So my ask is please just actively communicate to, as school administrators, to not, to stop trying to punt high-level math to the high school level. It's really not fair to our district families and students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Um, President Proctor, that was the last speaker.
All right, thank you. Um, we'll bring it back to the board for final comments before we adjourn. So I will let anybody else. Go ahead, whoever would like to make a comment.
I was just wondering if our superintendent wanted to address any of this.
David, why don't you start? Um, we've been working with the um, Montessori leadership of the teacher leaders and the site leadership around the question of algebra at an eighth grade. Um, both of those campuses have come to um, the collective decision that we are not going to offer algebra in eighth grade at the Montessori's because of the structure and format of the curriculum that's being offered at this time. So uh, we are working with those teams. We're open to the question and it's really just the choice into the Montessori design, which is driving that decision.
Can I ask a follow-up question then?
Sure.
So our neighboring districts that also have Montessori programs taking a similar approach where because of the whole Montessori method, apology to choosing not to offer algebra, or is it kind of a mixed bag depending on our neighboring like San Mateo County districts, for example?
Yeah, I can look into that for you and follow up to my knowledge. They're not, but I don't want to, want to state that with assurance because I would have to, to do that research first. Yeah. And then you want me to speak to the, sure? Yeah, so I'll just fill in whatever. Yeah, um, so uh, you know, at some point, actually, we should uh, follow up with you, Linda, because the messaging from the district about enrollment in double um, algebra has been exactly the opposite of what uh, she's describing that she's experiencing at her school. Um, in fact, we are strongly encouraging um, students to consider the, the double period. So, you know, the factual foundation of what she's saying, we need to understand because that messaging would be counter to what we're advocating for as a district. And we meet with our counselors and our principal regularly will um, agendize it for both of those upcoming meetings. Um, but we also don't solely leave it up to um, our adolescents to direct that. Um, we use a process where we will actually go through and identify students who show um, strong success on our internal assessments and on prior math state assessments and in their math grades. Um, and we go through a follow-up conversation with the family and we say, hey, Maggie, we noticed you got an A both semesters in math in sixth grade and seventh grade. You scored advanced on the exam. You've got nineteen out of twenty or twenty out of twenty on all of our internal assessments. And I'm just wondering about your course choice, because you chose teachers. And that's like a, actually a real example from last year, where we say, we want you to help your teachers, but we also see a real math um, interest. You just really, you're excelling in the subject. And actually, many students um, are currently taking our double block uh, math class as a result of some of those meetings. And this year it'll only get better because we have more data to be able to pull from. When we have those conversations, last year we only had the one year's worth of um, internal assessment data. So I think it's certainly good for us to hear that from, uh, from parents because we need to know that that inhabits so that we can connect with our staff and, and move that conversation forward. And ultimately, I think the proof will be in the pudding in terms of how many of our young people choose to pursue that route. And we have some incredible elective programs at our schools. So kids do sometimes just choose to take that second music class or that second theater class or that additional um, whether it be computers or STEM. And we think that's great too, because we really believe in our sixth, seventh and eighth grade math seasons.
Comments to the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, um, I really appreciate you, everybody sharing the work that you're all doing. I, I think that um, you know, it's obvious from this presentation, but also visiting classrooms, you know, I was, I was at Audubon not too long ago and just visiting a classroom where they're having a really robust discussion about math and the whiteboard was just full of the teacher frantically writing down all of the ways that the kids were solving this math problem. And every single way was different. I mean, it's obvious that the kids were engaged. They were having a fun time and, you know, who even knew that there was this many different ways to solve it? And thank you for explaining, you know, why, how, like, why you even divide by a fraction, because I couldn't even conceptualize why we even do this, because I know you do it because the problem says it, but I couldn't even think of like why you even do this. So um, so thank you. But um, but just getting back to, you know, this is the collaboration amongst students and then amongst teachers and just educators in our district is, is amazing. And to see the work that's being done for professional development and, and the feedback is, is really awesome, you know? Um, we've seen feedback from professional development. It's not always positive and to see just amazing feedback is, is great. And so um, so thank you for all of that. And you know, at some point, we'll see how this all ties into achievement and, and I'd love to see that data and um, but, but what you've, what you've shown here is, is great. And I, I love going into classrooms and seeing how engaged the students are. Even in the middle school, when math seems hard and doesn't seem like it could be very interesting, but seeing everybody around a table and um, fully engaged is, is just great to see. So really great work and thank you for sharing everything with us. Okay, well then, back to our agenda. Um, or item seven, which is adjournment. So
A big motion to adjourn.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, Trustee Brooks, for the motion and Trustee Kim for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's four ayes. We are adjourned at six fifty-five PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.